Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Coleman Council at our Law, It's in Rules Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 16th. My name is Andrea Schott, the Council President and Organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As Organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The Chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the city, to the public, on the city's website. Although we will not have public speaking, you could sign up to speak at our council meeting by emailing alisatinty@kingsdon-ny.gov by 2:00 p.m. on October 6th. Or you could also submit written comments to the same email address, emtinty@kingsdon-ny.gov, or popping them off at the drop box located outside the side door of City Hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your board's representative at any time. If you have any audio issues, text messages, the following number, 845-594-6120. Please note, calls will not be answered during the meeting, but the number to text again is 845-594-6120. As the Organizer, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an events Chair, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell; committee members, Alderwoman Rita Worthington, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly, Alderman Don Tollerman; non-committee council member, we have Alderman Dove; city staff, we have city clerk, Alisa Tinty; court counsel, Dan Gardenstein; and Mayor Steve Noble. Thank you for your patience, and on behalf of the Coleman Council, I wish you and your family good health. And I now turn the floor to Chair Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Good evening. This is Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. It is 6:37 now, and I'm calling this meeting to order. The first order of business we have is the sale of 104 MacIntyre Street. We have the owner here, Nancy Torres, of the property. This is a property that was sold by the city to Nancy, and back then, this is something we don't do anymore, but back then, we used to have a clause on the deed that said that in order to resell the property, the owner would have to get approval, written approval from the Coleman Council. So she is trying to sell the property. I believe she has a buyer already, and she needs that to go through this step with us. Nancy, are you on the line? Would you like to speak on the issue?
Yes, hi. Hi, everybody, and thank you again for being here and staying safe and using social distancing. And thank you to the teachers that are working hard. First, I'd like to say I want to thank the city for allowing me to purchase the property originally. It was for my daughter, and I did a lot of renovations to it to meet all the city's fire codes, safety codes, and building codes that were necessary because the home is falling down. And since then, since 2005, I've kept the house up to the standards that the city has required. They've come in every year and done their city inspections. I've gotten a CO approval to use my home as a residence, and I also recently have just put solar on the property as well. So to help it be more energy efficient for not only the tenant or the person that owns it, will be owning it, but to show that the city is in support of going. So, and now I need to sell the property. I'm getting a lot older, and I just need to get out of this business of owning too many homes in the city of Kingston. So I'm asking you to finally give me the release, I guess it would be, so that I have the permission to sell this property to the parties that are interested. It's a young company, so they'll keep the building still as a residential, from what I understand.
Okay. Do any committee members have any questions for Nancy, or does Dan Gardenstein want to explain this process to us?
I can just make a comment.
Yes, Alderwoman Worthington?
I just wanted to make a comment on the communication that has Nancy listed as Nancy Reyes.
Yes, Reyes is my married name, but I'm going back to my maiden name, which is Torres. So that's why my screen shows Torres, but I'm still considering it, so it gets legally changed.
Okay, so the deed is in Reyes, then, right?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. Yes, Alderman Scott Childress?
Yeah, I see that it says here, you know, "Consent shall not be arbitrarily withheld upon compliance with provisions of A through K." I'm just wondering, do we have any documents that demonstrate compliance with provisions of A through K?
Well, the city had to come in and do an inspection, fire codes. It says premises of all buildings must meet the construction and be compliant with the existing building and fire codes. The purchaser is required to obtain the appropriate permits, because I told you I had to renovate this whole building. So they just want everything according to the rules and regulations back in 2005. Purchaser agrees to obtain permits within two months of obtaining a final approval from the Board. Guarantee is permitted on the premises for inspection. For the building and safety unit, to get my CO, Certificate of Occupancy, is to be issued by the building that's F. And the event, the fire officers, after deliberation, determines that the grantee has breached any of these. I have up to 30 days to rectify those. Upon failure of the guarantee, not able to correct them, then it would go back to the city of Kingston, which has been in compliance every year since I've owned it. It's also been a Robco home, so everybody comes in and spits it. The court were reverting the title from the city, it's releasing the city of any liabilities, which the title is now in my name, so therefore, the city is no longer liable for anything that happens on that property. Guarantee must identify and hold harmless the city of Kingston in such events. So, again, it's repeating itself. The city of Kingston would not be liable for anything that happens on the property. And then L, that 104 MacIntyre Street, I cannot sell it without the approval of the Coleman Council. That's, you know, the short form.
Sorry, I had reached to Nancy and to the Building Department today. I haven't heard back, but if, Nancy, if you have copies of those documents that you can send to us before council votes on it, I believe we could still move on it, because I know this is time-sensitive for you, and it would be conditional in us getting those documents.
Absolutely. I can probably drop them off at the county, City Hall?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes, Nancy, Dan Gardenstein has his hand up.
We already have all of that that was forwarded and secured today. There was actually a reverter release that was executed back in 2006, when all of these conditions were initially complied with. Unfortunately, in 2006, that reverter release was filed with the county clerk's office, but there is no factual dispute at this point with regard to the compliance with A through K. Again, that was done, I believe, 14 years ago. Only thing that's left is the council's approval for the sale. So, I mean, certainly I have a copy of the deed, and also have this copy of the CO, which could not have been issued without compliance with A through K.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess we don't need that from you, Nancy. So what should this committee report read? Dan, I have here, I just wrote it myself, "Resolution to Grand Consent to the Sale of 104 MacIntyre Street As For the Conditions on the Property Deed As Per Attached." Is there anything else that I need to add to that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so do I have a motion? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Patrick O'Reilly, all in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Nancy. Have a good evening. Okay, so the second order of business, we have a proposal that was sent by Alderman Tollerman to rezone several, it's actually two properties, but they're subdivided into several lots. So, done. Did you want to comment on that?
Yes, I'd like to comment. Thanks, Jeffrey. So, these are, as everyone knows, affordable housing, or housing of all types, is desperately needed for a city. And these two areas, one being the Lawton Park, and the other being Golden Hill area, seem to be the best candidates to develop multifamily housing for the residents of Kingston. And so, the Golden Hill area, as many of you probably realize, has been in conversation with the Ulster County and the Ulster County Planning Department. What they've been doing is looking at the jail, and tearing down the jail, and really making some land available to developers to build housing. So, on the agenda tonight, there was a map that I provided, so if anyone is unclear exactly where these properties are, you can take a look at that. But they're right along Route 32, before you hit, before you get to the chateau, sort of at the edge of the city limits. Golden Hill is up on the hill, on the, I guess, west side of Route 32, and Lawton Park is on the east side of 32. Lawton Park is 20 acres of woodland right now, and there are currently developers that are looking at both properties to potentially develop. So what we're doing here is kind of making it easier for developers to propose a site plan. You know, when you're a developer looking to build, there's many uncertainties about, you know, whether you'll get approvals for your plans. One of the main, one large hurdle is zoning. So, a developer who wants to build multifamily housing in these two areas would need to go through the planning process and get these areas zoned to allow for multifamily. So the idea here is to signal to developers that the city of Kingston wants housing developed here, and we're going to make it a little bit easier for you by having these two areas zoned so that multifamily housing can be developed here. Currently, these two areas are zoned triple R, which is single residence, and what I'm proposing here is to change the zoning to R6, which will provide for multifamily residents. Now, it doesn't mean you have to develop multifamily. Under R6, you can also develop single family, but it just gives the developer more flexibility. And, you know, as I think you may know, I'm on the Housing Committee, and I'm aware of developers currently looking, different developers, at both of these properties. So clearly, the idea here is to create housing with an emphasis on affordable housing. That's what we need more than anything. And of course, there's a second, but less important reason here is this will create a, help our tax base and provide more income to the city in the long term, so that's another reason in favor of this. But these two areas lend themselves to multifamily based on their location, because the bus, the bus goes right up Route 32 there. You know, Ulster County's Bus Depot is up on Golden Hill. So, and now with the new Empire State Trail that's being built along Boulevard with 32, residents in these two areas will be able to walk into the uptown area and, you know, get what they need. So it's really two great areas to develop significant housing, not ones or twos, but dozens of new homes, hopefully over 100 new homes. So, that's the idea here, to signal to the developer world that the city of Kingston is serious, that we want development to happen, and we want affordable housing to happen. So that is the proposed legislation.
Yeah, and just to refresh everybody's mind, I believe it was, I don't remember if it was either last month or the month before, we, Dennis Doyle presented to us about marketing the property of Golden Hill for workforce housing, and we voted to give them our, basically to say that we agreed with that, with the fact that they were marketing it to developers for that purpose.
Right, that, I thought I'd dovetail with that, that I had been in communication with the Ulster County Planning, Dennis Doyle and his team, as well as, there's a housing group with the county, so we're doing this in concert with them. They're aware of this effort.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, President Schott?
I'm mentioning affordable housing, which obviously we need. I was just checking with the committee, because it was several months ago when the committee sent out that request, I think it was this DVA, that there's a certain percentage of new development being affordable. And I was just kind of seeing what the next steps of that, because if we're talking about, you know, developers and stuff, this is something that personally I would really like to see in place, to make sure that affordable housing is always there. So I don't know if that's something that you all have, you know, thought about or know what the next step is, but if that could be kind of brought back to this committee, would be really great.
Good. Yes, Rennie Scott Childress?
Scott Childress here, yes. To build on what President Schott said, that, I think, pushes us toward bringing back up the idea of zoning reform in Kingston. That's the most comprehensive way to ensure that all new development takes into cognizance the creation of affordable housing, because at this point, you know, we could probably pursue some kind of, I don't know if it would be an overlay district, or, you know, a revision of a particular zone. It just seems like, you know, we don't want to, at this point, add to the confusion of the zones that we have, and there are some provisions in parts of town for affordable housing. And I'm pretty sure, too, that the county is looking at, in selling that property where the jail is, that they're looking at it in terms of finding a developer who will put in affordable housing. So, yeah, I think we need to take, we need to be aware of all these different issues. I don't know how quickly we can get through something like zoning, but that's something we definitely have to put on the front burner. And so I think, in this particular case, it's a great idea to alter the zoning for these two areas. As Don said, it's not precluding single-family homes, but it's giving flexibility to a developer who comes in to really think about what's the best housing for those areas and for the city of Kingston, particularly those who are at the low end of the income spectrum.
And then I saw Alderman Tollerman's hand. What's up?
No, it's okay.
Okay, then Patrick O'Reilly?
Hi, Patrick O'Reilly. Is this land all owned by the county inside the city? Is that all of the land, or just partial, part of the land? And if it is just part of the land, who owns the other parts? Have they been notified that this action's being taken?
So, this is Don Tollerman. The Lawton Park is owned by one developer, well, it's a partnership, and they have been notified. The Golden Hill parcels, some are owned by the county, some are not. The ones that are not are adjacent to Golden Hill and are undeveloped, but they are not all owned by the county, and no, they have not all been, I mean, obviously, this has been on the website, but no, they have not been individually contacted and apprised of this proposal.
Yes, Alderman O'Reilly?
I would imagine we want to contact all the parties that are involved before we go ahead and rezone any areas.
Yes, and that, dovetailing on that, the first step would be for us to send this to the Kingston Planning Board and to the Ulster County Planning Board for comments, and along with that, we would also have to schedule a public hearing, so that those would be the first step, so we wouldn't be voting on the rezoning right away. Dan Gardenstein has his hand up?
I was just going to say you have to have a public hearing, and that's the opportunity for the property owners to be notified and to express their position with regard to the rezoning at this point. It is just the beginning of the process. You went through this process with a much smaller parcel last month, and in many respects, this is very similar to the issues that were addressed with the Arms House property, where the zone was basically, the present zone is basically obsolete, and this is an attempt to address that issue in advance, so that we don't get caught up in planning board issues once the actual development is proposed. It's a request just to acknowledge the fact that these are not parcels that are properties owned right now, particularly the jail parcel. That is clearly not a single-family residence appropriate parcel. Again, much like the Arms House property was not suitable for a single-family residence, and the use, you know, was basically exempt because it was the county. So this is an attempt to correct this in front of, you know, get in front of the ball, rather than to deal with this, you know, a year and a half down the line.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman O'Reilly?
Do we have the names of the developers that own the large parcel of property on the, what is it, the east side of 32?
Do we have them tonight, or do we have them in general? I mean, obviously, the city has them, and the city will be reaching out to them in the course of this process. I mean, you know?
Yeah, to answer that, I don't have the names right in front of me right now. Okay, any other questions or comments? I have a procedural question, Dan. We need to declare it an unlisted action, and we also need to send it to the involved agencies for comment. Do those have to be two separate committee reports?
Well, actually, they're not involved agencies, they're interested agencies, because they don't have a final discretionary call. And you are referring them, it's not that you're referring them to interested agencies, you're referring it to the Planning Board, the Ulster County Planning Board, and the City Planning Board pursuant to the section of the city code that requires that. So it's not a referral under secret, it's a referral under the code. Whether it's one resolution or two resolutions makes absolutely no difference legally.
Okay, so I'll do it in one, just to make it easier for us. Pursuant to... Okay, so I'll read what I have here. "Resolution to Declare Unlisted Action and Refer to the Ulster County Planning Board and the Kingston Planning Board. The rezoning petition of multiple properties as per attached pursuant to the city code." Anything else that should be added to that, Dan?
No, that sounds fine.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Alderman Scott Childress. Do I have a second? Second by Don Tollerman, all in favor? Okay, so that's everybody in favor. No, so that's 5-0. Let me just... Okay, so motion carries. So that's the first step again, and then we will schedule a public hearing regarding this. It will be sometime before the next Law and Rules Meeting next month, so I will, I'll get in touch with the committee via email to see when we will schedule that, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, I see a lot of nodding heads. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So now, that concludes the new business. Now we're moving on to old business. If it's okay with the committee, we have the mayor here, so I don't want to take too much more of his time, so I'm going to move the second, he's here to speak about the charter commission, so I'm going to move that to the top of the agenda. If that's okay with everybody? Yes, okay. So, hi, Mayor Noble. So, yes, would you like to speak on this, or President Schott?
Sure, I could jump in. I mean, the first step, really, which I have talked about multiple times, and I've sent to information, I think, multiple times, would really be to decide on how we're going to start a charter commission. There are three ways that we could do it, because our current charter doesn't actually say how to do it. Some charters say that it has to happen every 10 years, and you have to follow these laws created. Our charter doesn't say it, so therefore, we have to follow New York State law, and that has three different options. I have sent it to you in the past, but not recently before this meeting. If the committee wants me to read these three ways, or you all have them, what would you prefer?
Does everyone remember this, or do you need a refresher?
I'll do a refresher. All right, so the charter commission may be established by any of three procedures set forth in Section 36 Municipal Home Rule Law. The first procedure would be the city's legislative body may establish a charter commission by local law, or it may submit to the city voters the question, also in form of a local law, of whether or not to get charter commission. In both instances, the local law enacted by the council may either indicate the number of members of the commission, or provide a method for determining the number. Whether the members shall be elected or appointed must also be specified. The local law also must prescribe the manner of appointment or election of commission members. The second way is the mayor of a city may create a charter commission by appointing no less than, nor more than 15 residents of the city to serve as members. The commission is established upon the filing with the city clerk of the mayor's certificate of appointment, which also will name the chairman, or woman, vice, men or women, and secretary. The third option is the establishment of a commission by voter initiative requires signatures equal to 15% of the votes cast within the city for governor. If the petition is found to meet all the requirements of law, the legislative body is required to submit to a referendum the local law as proposed. The local law must prescribe the composition and structure of the charter commission and provide a method for appointment or election of its members. It may also include the names of specific persons to serve on the commission. Those are the three procedures. Does anybody have any questions on that, or thoughts?
Yes, Alderman O'Reilly?
Andrea, could you just, I'm sorry, could you just look in that first one? Did it say that it would be voter-based?
Well, it's confusing, so I'm going to go, I just read right off of the Municipal Home Rule Law, but it's confusing, because the first one I read- But it's confusing, because the first one I read, it's like, you know, kind of two parts, an A and a B, right? So it can be just the legislative body, which would be the common council. We would establish that we're starting a charter commission by a local law. And then we would select, I have a, the council would appoint a set of commissioners. So the local law would be a position of the charter in order... And I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong, let me restart that. The council would appoint a set of... Yes, so these things with the local law. How many commissioners we could include? Who is going to be on there? If there's going to be staff support? How it can be resourced? All of that is recommended for the city to write in the law, so that there's no uncertainty. If we were to send it to the city voters, the question would be, do you want to start a charter commission? And then when it would come back, say they vote yes, it's back to us, and it would still have to go back to the public for a vote. So it's kind of confusing to do it that way. I'm supportive of having the legislative body start the charter commission in a way that includes the mayor and a way that includes the public as an educational part of it. Because eventually, it will then go to the public for a vote, no matter what, at the end of the charter commission work. Does that make sense? I know I was stumbling on that, so I was reading the wrong paragraph. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, you know, you're fading in and out there for me a little bit, but I get the gist of what you're saying. Of course, you know, I always like to see people vote on stuff. I love that. So anytime, you know, we can get the voters involved, excited about something like this, I think that's the way to go. But, you know, I haven't looked at this as deeply as you have. So, but, you know, my first instinct is to say, let the voters vote, you know? And then...
Well, the public will vote on this at the end. They will be the ones that decide if the charter passes or not. That's absolutely set.
But if we go the other way, you're saying they could be the ones who say you need a charter or you don't need a charter, right? They could be the ones who actually say that to us, right?
Well, not, we will have a charter. It's if they want to have a charter commission, that would be the question.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the commission, I just abbreviated it. But they would, if we'd let them vote, they could say, hey, you know, maybe now's not the time during this situation. Or they could say, hey, great time to take a good look at this charter. I don't know, I always like people having a voice, that's all. If you hear, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. I just think it added a little procedural confusion, I guess. Because I totally agree with you that it's crucial that the public is involved from the beginning, because they're the ones that are gonna be, you know, having the final say, for sure. And this is their city. So I completely agree on that. It's just the procedure just seems to be confusing. And that, after talking to Benjamin Center, seems that they agree with that, too. I don't know if anybody else has anything?
Well, I just wanted to say that I personally would like it to be a joint effort between the council and the mayor. So I think this would be a good opportunity for the mayor to jump in, if he has anything to comment. Mayor Noble?
Thanks, yeah. You know, I think we, when we talked a few months ago about the concept of the charter, I think we all recognize that there are parts of the charter that need to be updated. And I think one of the, you know, the easiest ways to start that process would be for us to, via local law, you know, write, you know, a system for how we would create a commission, and then appoint those members and be able to figure out how to support that commission with resources and start the process that way. I do agree also that, you know, educating the public about what the charter is and what it means is a really critical part of all of this. And I think that that's what would, you know, be a concern of mine if we were to put that to the voters right away. Because, you know, we could ask, you know, what is a charter and what is not a charter? Or like whether to change the charter or not. And, you know, I do think it will be hard to, you know, educate people in that regard when they may not fully understand the, all of the different issues that exist, where if we actually create a commission that could then spend time going through what all of the issues are, we would at least have a better understanding, you know, why this matters to voters and why it matters to the city. So it could just, I don't know. So my sense is, is that I'd be happy to work with the council to create, you know, a local law that works for both the mayor's office and for all of you. And that also serves the interests of the public, you know, as we go through this process. And I think we all recognize that this is a multi-year effort. And we do have to start someplace. And, you know, maybe where we start is spending a couple of months plus long process just drafting a really good local law. And, you know, maybe by the time we actually start implementing the charter commission, our economy will improve, and we'll actually have more resources available to put behind this effort. Because I think that that is a concern that, you know, I know that we've talked about, you know, with the folks who do this, is that, you know, having staff support, whether internal or external consultant support, and actually having resources to do education campaigns. All of that is really not currently available to municipalities at this moment due to COVID and the pandemic and this economic recession that we're in. But in the months ahead, we hope that that's going to change. So this would at least allow us to start a process of crafting a local law.
Yes, and just quickly to add to that, I believe throughout this year, we've seen many examples of things that have come before this committee that should, that we've noticed should have been addressed or should be addressed via the charter. So this would be a good opportunity to take a comprehensive look at that. And back to what Patrick was saying, I think having, putting together a charter commission and then having them do the work, they could also be tasked with educating the public about what the charter is and what a reform means. So I think that would be, then when we put it out for a vote, the public will be better informed about this. But Alderman Tolloman had his hand up?
Hi, this is Don Tolloman. So Steve, I know another initiative of yours in the council was had, six months ago, was doing a zoning revision. You know, we had a zoning commission. And, you know, charter reform, sure, we should do it. It hasn't been done in almost 50, over 50 years, but, you know, I don't know how much bandwidth, if we can do both. You know, I would advocate for, I think that the zoning revision and the work of the zoning commission is more important than the charter reform at this point. You know, where our city is, you know, every day, we have to reinterpret the code, and it's costing a lot of money, you know, that we're not, you know, that we don't have code that's legible and organized and makes sense. So I don't know if we have the bandwidth to do both the charter reform, charter revision, and zoning revision. But I would advocate for focusing on zoning revision first.
Yeah, I was part of the zoning task force, and that would not be done by us per se. That would be, we would hire a consultant to do that. I believe we have already selected, we have selected one of the proposals. So I don't know, I think the, I think there are two different things, but I don't think one precludes the other, because there could be two different groups. Alderman, President Schott had her hand up?
Yeah, and Don, I don't know if you're talking more about finances of it. Because the zoning, the consultant came back at 500. And according to Benjamin Center, the range for her would be 25 to maybe 40,000. So it's not nearly the same cost. There's also a group, the Anti-Displacement Learning Network, that's applying for a grant that we're looking into three really awesome initiatives, and one of them is the zoning. I know the Housing Director, Mike Gilliard, is also looking to reach out to the consultants to see if, you know, since COVID hit, if there's something that could be happening with the cost of the zoning. But I don't think we really need to, it's not like charter reform's gonna cost us even close to the same amount. And it's such a long process. And we could always, you know, put a plaz to it if we realize we get to it, and then we can't do both for some reason. But, I mean, to stop it now, just in case, you know, something that I think we clearly need, and a lot of people, a lot of the public thinks that we clearly need, is really wise to do right now, just starting the ball rolling. And I'm completely in favor of zoning code change and getting the community in here, too. And I think that's just as important, both of those initiatives.
Yes, Alderman Tolloman?
Yeah, I don't know how much the charter reform would cost us in terms of consultants and everyone's time, but, you know, that's something that we would need to grapple with. Like, you know, you said it won't cost me...
Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm cutting out a little bit where my location is, but it's... From two different sources that would know a lot better than us, it would cost about 25,000 to 40,000.
Okay.
But significantly less than the zoning.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Alderman O'Reilly?
You know, as an educator, I understand the mayor's point of view, educate people first, get the commission rolling, you know, get some people working on this and educate the community. As a legislative body, I understand that we have to trust the people to do the right thing with their vote sometimes. And when they have, and when they have that ability to vote and get involved in government, and it's one of our three choices. I have to tend to say, let's go for the vote. You know, let people get involved, let them, right at the get-go, let them be a part of this. Let people get behind it. And then, I think then you, then you'll have the power behind it to carry this, to carry it through. So it's just an idea.
Alderman Scott Childers?
I totally agree with the idea of making this as democratic as possible, getting as many people behind it as possible. I don't think that that is going to be very easy. However, we live in a day and age in which a lot of people are extremely suspicious. We saw how people were very suspicious about the New York State opportunity to redo, or to look at the Constitution, the state constitution. So while I'm in favor of it, I think it's gonna be something we have to put a lot of attention to, put a lot of work into, so that people can see the possible benefits of this reform. And like some other things we talked about, charter reform doesn't necessarily mean that anything changes. You know, the charter commission may say, we've got the best charter in the whole world. So, you know, this is one of those big issues. We've gotta, you know, work with a lot of different groups, a lot of different folks, that we can make sure that everyone feels included in that process. And we absolutely minimize the sorts of noises that can cause people to be distrustful of this kind of a project.
Anyone else? Okay, so, yes, Alderman O'Reilly?
Can you give some examples of what's wrong with the current document, the current charter? What's, I mean, it's been running the city for a while. And I was just wondering, what is the catalyst behind this movement to change the charter? What is a few examples of what's wrong with our charter?
Well, just off the top of my head, I can remember two issues that we've dealt with this year. One was the functions of the different departments, and there seems to be a lot of redundance there. Another issue was the formation and the makeup of commissions. Last month, we voted to, local law, to change the charter in one aspect regarding the Heritage Area Commission, because the number of members that was required by the charter was unrealistic. So that, those are a few examples. I'm sure, once you start opening it up and looking at it comprehensively, they find a lot more that, you know, in however many years the charter hasn't been updated, there's a lot that has changed. Rennie Scott Childers had his hand up?
Yeah, there may not be an issue at all. That's, the point of this is that you want a group to take a look at your charter with some period, you know, regularity, so that you can respond to changes if there need to be. If there's been a change in, you know, suppose the population of Kingston had grown by 20,000 since we looked at the charter last. You want to do this as a matter of being good government. And so it's not that we go into it saying, we gotta change this, we gotta change that. We can raise some issues, but the important thing here is that it's been too long since we've done this. And it's just time to take a look and see what we think, and see what the commission would think.
Yes, Alderman O'Reilly, and then President Schott.
You know, it's like any other document, if it's got good bones, Rennie, then you can, you can work around it. As Jeffrey said, we worked around it with the Heritage Commission. We worked around, we can work around these department issues, I'm sure. We don't have to have a charter change to have the mayor be able to, you know, control his departments. Maybe we do, I don't know. But it doesn't seem like that's some, that seems like something we could all hand with the mayor. And I understand, Rennie, that you, to go back and check the charter and make sure everything's okay. But, I mean, unless there's some real pressing issues that we can handle, do we really want to spend up to $40,000 on a charter evaluation if the bones of the document are good? Maybe like our Declaration of Independence or something like that, where you might not want to change it much.
President Schott was next, and then Rennie can respond.
I'll yield the floor to Rennie.
Sorry, you just spoke to historian Patrick. Declaration of Independence is not part of our legal apparatus, and so it has absolutely no bearing on how we govern ourselves. That point to the side, you take your car in once a year to get inspected, right? Because you think that the bones of the car are okay, but you want somebody to take a good look at it to make sure. And so this is the same sort of thing. You're taking the car in, you're taking the car of government into the shop and taking a good look, because it may be that we've got great bones, but we would like to be sure of that. So, you know, I just think this is an important thing to do with some regularity, and it's been a long time since we did it. So, you know, I mean, we can work it out, too. There's no problem.
Dan Gartenstein, kind of that correction.
I think one of the issues that is coming out clearly in the discussion is there is a lot of confusion with regard to what actually is in the charter. Just for clarification, the charter does not outline the makeup or the appointments of the commissions and the boards. That has been stated repeatedly, and it's just not accurate. And I would strongly suggest that before you all go down this road, you will familiarize yourself with what's actually in the document, because clearly, there are misconceptions and there are misunderstandings of what's there and what is not there. You're speaking about provisions that are in the code, not in the charter. And you really need to be clear about that before you go down this path, regardless of how much money you're, you know, talking about, you know, spending.
President Schott, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I had a, oh, yeah, I had a couple of things, and then I kept yielding the floor. Now I think I forgot some of them. But, yeah, the charter and the code are, of course, different, and the charter is not that long. So, you know, you could read it in a sitting. I would recommend reading the city code in a sitting. It's a very long sitting. But, yeah, I mean, if you haven't read the charter, I... But yeah, I mean, if you haven't read the charter, I highly recommend it because then you maybe have some mind of what you would want to see. You know, and one of the things that you could, a charter commission could say that they want in the charter is to say every 10 years, every 15 years, that there shall be a charter commission that looks at it, which eliminates all of this, what's going on, the back and forth. So that's something that could be added into a charter. But I just think like Mayor saying that we may have good bones, we may not have good bones, but we're not the ones that would really know. So instead of just throwing Band-Aids on, on fixes or to fix with Band-Aids, it could be a good time to address and because it's going to take a while, you know, I just think we start to get the ball rolling and, you know, hopefully the zoning work, it gets done as well and that this doesn't take away from that, absolutely. And the other thing I was going to say, this has to be created by local law, whether it's the legislative body or by vote. And I think in the may, if he disagrees, but I think we're all on either those two tracks and not giving this sole responsibility to the mayor. Do you agree with that, Mayor Noble? I mean, are you, is that what you're thinking too? I know our last conversation, which was months ago about this, that's what we, you had said to me.
I think in general, you know, the best charter commissions are ones that are appointed jointly, you know, in a joint effort. I think the best results and so that's what I'm supportive of and, you know, we should, I'm sure we'll get to do that.
Right, that's my hope is work at two branches together, but this has to be crafted through or done through a local law. So my suggestion is for us to just say, we're going to start working on this local law. It's going to take a while to really, in some research, to craft a really good local law. And so that's what my recommendation for first steps is to have the, and the mayor work together to do that.
I agree with that.
Oh, can I just finish off and then we could decide after that created if it's even something that we want to consider doing. So we don't even have to decide right now. We just have to take the step into creating a local law.
Sorry, Andrea, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You got, your screen got frozen for a while, so I thought you were done. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rita had her hand up and then we'll, and then the mayor.
And I was just going to say that I am in favor of doing a joint effort. I think while I agree with Pat that the public should be involved, it sounds, and to Dan Gardenstein's point too, it sounds as if, you know, we may need to educate ourselves a little bit more as far as the charter is concerned and for us to put that on the public might be a little too. You may, it may not be the correct thing. So I like the joint effort and then listening to Andrea speak about, you know, the steps in doing this, it sounds as if the local law needs to be created first and then moving on to the next step.
All right, yes, Mayor Noble?
I was just going to state that I'd be willing to serve if there was maybe a special committee formed, if you will, to be able to help put together that local law. I don't know how you, how, what official process would go into creating that committee, but, you know, I'd be willing to serve as, you know, one of the folks to work with you to draft that.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman O'Reilly.
Mayor Noble, Alderman O'Reilly, I'm just wondering what, why would you, why do you want charter change? I mean, what is, what do you see the purpose of that would be?
I think from my perspective, you know, the charter was written at a time when certain departments in particular, you know, were really being flushed out. And so if you look at the charter, you'll see that certain departments have a lot of responsibility given to them in almost a line by line fashion where other departments are not even mentioned in the charter. And so from an operations point of view, I think that I would like to clean up some of the language, you know, just simply that it's been, you know, it is outdated and, you know, there are certain things in the charter that we don't even have anymore, don't even use anymore. And then there are certain things in the charter that we, we do or would like to do that we, we don't have in there. And so I think that from that perspective, you know, I'm interested, but I do think that it's always, you know, going back to Rennie's, you know, you know, concept of bringing the car into the shop. Like, I'm always interested as, you know, as someone who, you know, you know, has a master's degree in public administration, I always want to make sure that the operations that we're running are the most effective and efficient. And the charter may be able to help, you know, lay that foundation. And so I'm at least interested in looking at other people's charters. I'm interested in looking to see what other cities may have that we don't have and, you know, and I think selfishly, there could be things in other people's charters that would help me be able to, you know, more effectively run government and make it be more efficient and maybe reduce the bureaucratic hurdles that, you know, we currently have to, to do. And I'll just give one example and I'm not saying that I would ever, you know, so at the county level and the county charter gave the county executive the ability to move money found in budgets up to a certain dollar value. And I think at the county level, it's like $50,000 and without having to go to the legislature for approval. Right now, if one of my departments wants to move $10 from the office supply line to the, you know, the furniture line, they have to come to the common council for approval. And I think, feel like there may be things in the charter that we could fix to be able to just kind of simplify the process within certain means. And, you know, those are just certain examples that I think we've all come up with over the years. And that's why I think it's at least worth having a conversation and, you know, about how can we do things a little better. And again, like Ray said, there may not be any changes that we want to make in the end. Or maybe it is, you know, just figuring, fixing the typos and changing, you know, some of the references to make them up to date to today's, you know, you know, world, but there may not be holistic changes that need to be made, but I do think it's at least worth talking about before we even decide whether we want to put it out to the voters or not. Because we may go through this early process and decide that there's not actually enough in there that we need the voters to change in a holistic way. And we may, one, be able to make changes just by the council action, by local law, but we just don't know yet because we really haven't taken the time to dig into it.
Thank you. Yes, President Shot.
So if anybody is interested in, in putting together a small, I could put together a small group, either a special committee or a subcommittee from laws and rules, if anybody's interested in working, I, I mean, I've done a lot of work on this, so I'm definitely interested and the mayor is too. So if anybody else is, you could just shoot me or Jeffrey and Jeffrey an email. So let me want to say it now. I didn't want to put anybody on the spot, just think about it. It'll, you know, take some researching for sure.
Thank you. Okay, I think, yes, Patrick.
I think that's a great idea, but to push for a law right out, right out of the get go, which is, I'm not sure that's happening or not, Andrea, are you just talking about forming a committee or are you actually talking about developing a law?
Well, the way that, so we would have to have a, sorry, hold on for a second. It just needs to put down. In order to start a charter commission, it would have to be by local law. We would, the local law, the city of Kingston is starting this commission. It will have this many members, maybe three from each legislative district, whatever, you know, the small committee decides to do. That would be the first step. So the law itself wouldn't be touching the charter. It would just be starting the commission, but that's how we would start the commission is through the local law. That make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, I, I hear you. I just don't, you know, if, if we do have the power to allow the people to vote, I don't know why we're trying, why we're circumventing that. I understand, maybe they don't have all the information, but they could get that information through several different ways, of course, media and things like that.
Patrick, the, the, if we were to go that route, it would also have to be through local law. So, you know, that's something that we could continue having conversations about, but it's still, we could still start forming this local law and then if our council members want to do it by vote, then, you know, we could switch the, the words basically with the local law.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to add before we move on? All right, well, thank you, Mayor, for coming. We appreciate your input. Okay, so then now we're moving on to what was the, back, circling back to what was the first item, old business. This is the Hudson Valley Landing property easement. It was on our agenda last month. We postponed discussion because that morning I heard from the city engineer that he had just seen that he had some questions about it. So he asked us to, to not move on it until his questions were answered. So any, any discussion on this? So, so yeah, I mean, what, I don't know, what we have here is not, it seems that they're asking us for, for a deed, but, but I don't have any supporting documents, so I don't think, I don't think we have the, all the information that would be necessary for us to, to do anything with this. So we just postponed it. Again, yes, President Shot?
This is Andrew Shot, yeah. I reached out to John Schultz and what the questions were he had. He sent them to me a couple of weeks ago and I followed up with him this evening, right, or this afternoon before I left and he had not gone, his concerns answered. So, I mean, I think this, you know, this committee have the deed in front of them. There were concerns brought up by other department heads. I just think that this isn't really wise to move, move forward with giving up a street without any information and without some of our departments being 100% confident with it.
Okay. So yeah, if, unless anybody has any objection, we will postpone this discussion for future. Everybody okay with that? All right. So, and then the last item on the agenda is, I'm sure you're all familiar with this because it's been on our agenda before, is the open space plan. The council voted on it. I believe it was last month or maybe the month before. All the month, all, all my months are blurring together right now, but we voted on it before. We weren't told at the time that we were supposed to have a public hearing before the vote. So now we are kind of backtracking. So we need to schedule a public hearing for this and then it will have to go back to the council for a vote again. So that I will reach out through email to the committee with dates. So we have two public hearings to schedule. They will be on two separate dates, of course. And yes, President Shot, you have your hand up?
Would it be okay if we just schedule this one for right before the laws and rules meeting for next month?
That's.
So it'd be the 21st at like 6:00 PM and just make it one meeting so that I don't have to set up two and, you know, we worry about, you know, leaving one in the public, not getting into the other?
Yes, that, that works for me if it works for everybody else. So six o'clock, so the next, the next laws and rules meeting will start at six o'clock. Basically, we would have the public hearing before and then we, it would just lead into the meeting as, as the public hearing finishes. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I've learned the last month that that's easier for the live stream too, so.
Okay, perfect. So we'll do that. So then I just have to, to schedule the other public hearing with the committee and I'll be reaching out to you this evening or tomorrow on some dates. Okay, then that, unless anybody else has anything to add, that concludes our agenda. Alderman Scott Childress?
I would just like to express a concern about the recent library budget vote. Our household never received notification of this vote. We don't have any say over the library and how they run their elections. I'm just registering a concern because the first I heard of it was somebody talking about how few people there were that showed up. And I think that that demonstrates how few people got noticed that this was happening. So.
Yeah, this is actually, I'm just, I'm hearing it for the first time. I voted on every library budget since, for the whole time I've been living in Kingston. I didn't know there was a vote happening this year.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it wasn't, well, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be in May, but they, the council postponed it because of COVID. But yeah, I didn't find out until I'd already been working yesterday and unfortunately worked until past the time it closed, which is the first time I missed voting in a while. So, yeah, I was disappointed too.
Yeah, the notice, notice for it was not, was not put out there the way that it should have been put out. By the time I got over there, I think it was only, I think I was number 136 out of 23,000 people. So it was, this was very disappointing.
Okay, any, anybody else has any other business to discuss? All right, so I will call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Worthington. We are adjourned. Thank you, Juan. Have a good evening and have a good rest of the week. I'll talk to you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you. Good night.